I would also like to request that it be put on the lighted signs, starting on January 15th, with Saturday, January 23rd on it.
The 15th. And saying. Specifically what? It's a limited number of characters, so.
Town election, Sat, Jan 23, 8-5, Town Hall.
So Town. Election, Sat.
Or, don't put Town Election, just put Vote.
Okay, so if we can fit Town Election, that's great. If not, Vote, Sat. Should we do the numeric 1 slash 25 slash 21, or do you want it to say January 23rd?
I think J A N, space, 2, 3. It's probably not that many fewer characters or more characters.
Okay, so Town Election, Sat, Jan 23, and then.
Town Hall, 8-5.
Yep. Wayne, you okay with that?
That's fine.
Election 8 to 5, is that what you're saying?
That's the hours, I believe, on the warrant. Is that correct?
That is it.
Anybody else?
To unmute?
I just see a chat saying, from Lois Wilson to everyone, tell them Star 6. That must be my phone, or, you know.
So if you're on your phone, Jim LaQuer, if you hit Star 6, it should unmute you. Do you have any others in attendance, Chris?
I think Kyle's there, probably taking notes, but there's only the two of us.
Can you text him?
I, I could try.
And just say Star 6. Oh, wait, he might be good now.
He's good, he's there.
Well, okay.
Oh, oh, who's him?
Jim, roll call. We got a roll call.
Okay, Jim LaQuer.
And Chris Nocella. Kyle, are you taking notes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we are all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I see we've got a volunteer response form to fill the vacancy that you guys have, so do you want to put him forth?
Yes. We would like to have Glavine, what's Glavine's last name again, Kyle?
Byers.
Say that again? Foster?
Byers.
Byers, yes, thank you. We'd like to have him fill in for the rest of this year until the next election. If that's possible, and Monday's approved.
Okay, so is this term up this election, or is this a long?
It's, it's just to fill in until the election. We lost the member, yeah, just till April, or whenever the next election is.
Okay, so Veronica can get a motion, please?
I move that we appoint Gavin Byers to a term beginning January 5th, 2021, through the annual election in April 2024, through the Board of Health. I, oh, I said that wrong. Through the town election on, in April 2021.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
They seem clear, fine.
I don't have anything.
Me either.
Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Kelly?
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do they have to close their meeting?
Yes.
Did we get Mr. Nocella and Mr. LaQuer's vote?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Mr. LaQuer says yes.
Yeah, Mr. Nocella, too. Gone in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. All right, so he is approved, and Kyle, if you will contact him, and we will have him sworn in tomorrow at the Town Hall.
Yep, and Chris, just to close your meeting, that's all.
Yep, and we would like to close the meeting at 6:12 of the Board of Health. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, bye-bye.
All right, we'll skip 2-2 because Rob's not available yet. We'll go to 2-3, so review approved sign at the January 23rd, 2021 election warrant. So can I get a motion on that?
I move that we approve and sign the January 23rd, 2021 election warrant.
Out of, out of session?
Yeah.
Out of session.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Well, before we do that, I just want to confirm that that warrant is actually correct. I know I looked at it, but Jim, did you look at it? And Wayne, did you look at it?
I have it right in front of me, and it has all of the things that were raised as issues corrected. So I've gone word by word, and I don't see anything else. So we have special instead of annual, we have Saturday instead of Monday, and we have 23 and not 25, and everything else appears to be in order.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, got it, Veronica?
Yeah.
Okay, calls in favor?
Veronica Kelly, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Will be here for you at your convenience.
Okay. So we have some time.
One minute, when you say at your convenience, isn't there a deadline that has to be posted by?
I believe we've got another week or more before it needs to be posted.
I thought it needed to be posted two weeks prior, or is it one week prior?
14 days. I think it's two weeks. I think we have another.
We have about three days. I think it has to be posted Friday. I'm not certain. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, I'm only going by what the clerk shared with me. Still had time even to have put it before you at the next meeting. But regardless, it'll be available for you tonight. So at your convenience, it'll be sitting right there for you to come in and sign, and we can get it posted up.
Could you confirm for us the day that it needs to be posted and email that to us tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I could probably find out right now as well, so it's while it's fresh.
Well, I would say there's been obviously some confusion, so I would think it would want to be corrected.
Yeah, this is kind of being an abundance of caution, but I would think that it would need to be posted by the end of the week, but I could be wrong. I don't know about election posting.
We can be there tomorrow signing, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not going anywhere. The three places I go in town here now. So the executive session's not till 7:00, so we'll skip down to 3, 4 to talk about consideration of a.
I thought we were going to 4.1.
Oh, yeah, we can do that, too. Neither one, if you want to go that way.
Amendments are put off until, until after.
Okay, so let's go to 4-1, Health Insurance Joint Purchase Agreement Consideration.
Yep, just within the hour, we received the draft JPA agreement back from council. So there's really enough time sufficient for you to have reviewed it. There were a couple of, as they classify them, minor amendments that they offered, and they were in large part consistent with the comments that I had shown in track changes as my concerns. But I'll email that out, and we get it adjourned for the next meeting.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Fair enough. Okay, I guess that one's done.
And Mr. Chairman, I did just get response back from the town clerk. It's seven days, so the 15th is the deadline for posting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. All right, 4-2 mandatory referral planning board, 61 Road. Is this one the cell tower one?
Uh, yes.
And this is just a renewal?
This one is, I believe. It's a renewal. I, I had a couple questions on this one, so are you ready for those, or do I? This is a mandatory referral, so I guess we can discuss. Is that right, Wayne?
Mm-hmm.
I guess my first question, and this is more a planning board question, why were these posted in the Groton Herald? Don't these usually go to the Sentinel or somewhere? I mean, are we doing postings now as a town? This is a general question, not for the mandatory referral, but it's on both of these. Why did it go to the Groton Herald instead of the Sentinel and Enterprise?
My understanding, my understanding on that, Veronica, is that for more than a year now, there has been a dispute between the land use departments and the Shoba Publishing, Fitchburg Sentinel, and the Lowell Sun. They acknowledged that they received payment on bills in the form of checks from applicants and misapplied them. We have the canceled check from the people. We have acknowledgement in writing from the corporation that they received the funds, but they're not willing to go backward and appropriately apply them, so there's still an outstanding balance showing for land use, so they've shut land use off. The treasure collector can still use them, other departments can still use them, but this is something that was being unraveled by Lindsay before she left, and we're at the point now where Beth needs to do a publication, so she's reached out to the Groton paper to be able to have some paper of local distribution.
Lindsay left a year ago, though. I, I guess the thing is, I think then that if we are posting these land use things in the Groton Herald, that the town should know that, because I know I don't check the Groton Herald for that.
I didn't even know they had a Groton Herald.
I've never even heard of it.
So I, I was just surprised to see that, and I, I know things from the planning board. I mean, I got off the planning board in September, and I know that our postings were still on, oh, Carla just put in the chat, they're not publishing the Board of Health either.
Okay, Jim, can you, can you get in contact with the Shoba Publishing and get this sorted out? Because it's not consistent that some boards can post and some boards can't. That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me if it's a town check going to them.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have, and the last communication I had with them was probably a month ago, and I went as high up the food chain in their finance offices as I could get, as I was allowed to be transferred, and the response was just that, that we need to be able to prove that which we've already proven, including proven by their writings back to us saying that they had received the checks, but just didn't put them on the right account. I don't know where it leads us. I don't know what the next move is, you know, perhaps a letter from council, shaking the tree a little bit, but we're.
Yeah, because I would, I would suggest doing that, because we can't be held hostage by a local paper. That's ridiculous.
It's just tough because they have three of our local papers.
My concern is that there could be legal ads that people from town would be interested in seeing that they are not going to be seeing because they're in the Groton Herald.
True.
And so I have no real objection to posting in the Groton Herald, other than people need to be aware of that in town. That that's the paper they need to check now, not the, not the Fitchburg or the Lowell paper.
True, and I don't know, Veronica, if it's something that was discussed at the planning board meeting, or if it's just a decision that Beth made out of frustration with trying to, to get things published through the Shoba Papers. But to Wayne's point, I can speak to Adam tomorrow and see if he can't shake something loose on it.
That would be good. Do we need a motion for that, or are we?
No, that's fine. I think the discussion is, is good enough.
Okay.
It's up record.
All right, and the other question I have, this is on, this tower is on the South Fitchburg Rod and Gun Club, Hunting and Fishing Club, whatever it's called. One of the question, one of the things that I saw in here, and this is pretty big, because it goes back, it's like a couple renewals back. It said somewhere in here that the police and fire have antennas on that tower. I was wondering if that is still the case, given that we are now with, you know, whoever the dispatcher is, we don't dispatch from town anymore. So I guess it's on about the fifth page in, 1, 2, 3.
Carriers co-located on the tower. It's the last bullet.
Yep, that's exactly it.
We do have Chief Boynton and Chief Sartell on the call. Perhaps they can address your question.
I'd be happy, Jim. We are, this Chief Boynton, we are still on that tower. It really has nothing to do with dispatch, because regardless where our dispatch system is, it talks into that radio system that communicates throughout the town. We have a town tower up on Bayberry Hill, and we're on that Rod and Gun Club tower as well.
Okay. So I guess my only comment would be that this would be, and I assume the same is true for police, correct?
Yeah, it's correct. We, we're on the same towers, and we, Chief and I have talked about getting planning involved in any of these towers as they come up to try and make sure we, we look at them as possible locations. These are hard to come by, transmission sites.
So I guess I, I would just, in our comments, point out that, that both fire and police have antennas on the tower, and to please take that into consideration when considering the renewal.
Yeah, and we've done that with Duff. The renewals came to me. All the, all the towers come through me, and we get the chance to comment. I think all the department heads get the chance to comment. And as each one of these renewals come up, we make sure that the appropriate language is in there for us to remain on the tower. And, you know, kudos to the, to this, to all the ones that were on, or this is the only public tower we're on, but we were on that tower at no cost. There's no charge to us to be on that tower.
So I, I consider that a positive. So that, that's the only comment I would have on this. I don't know.
And I have none, so.
That's where my only two, yeah, those were my only two things.
So to be clear, then, the comment from the Board of Selectmen is to make certain that the planning board is aware that your wish is that public safety, police, and fire be allowed to continue co-locating on there under the current terms, which is at no expense to the town?
That sounds good.
Okay, good enough for me. Okay, so that, we don't have to do a motion or anything, Jim, do we?
It might be good to have one, just so there's, on something as official as this.
So just a motion to thank the planning board for the referral and add the comment?
Gotcha.
I move that we thank the planning board for the referral, and note that we consider it a positive for police and fire to have antennas on the towers in town.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Right, quickly, I think we can get up 4-3 mandatory referral planning board for 152 North End Road.
Do you want me to go, Wayne?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I'm trying to find it still.
I'll, I'll wait for you.
Oh, there it is, okay. Got it, go ahead.
I guess I, I went through this. This is for the farm stand that opened in the fall up on North End Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it looks like it opened without being permitted. So I, I guess my question is, were all applicable inspections completed prior to the opening of the structure in the fall? And the, the letter from the building inspector says that they weren't allowed to occupy the building unless these inspections were completed, and I guess, I guess, am I correct in understanding that this farm stand opened for business without the required permits? And that would be my comment. What, what is done about things like that in this situation?
So would that be a question you're looking for the planning board to provide you an answer on?
Well.
The comment?
Yeah. I, I guess I would, my comment would be, am I correct in understanding this farm stand opened for business without the required permits? And without all applicable inspections completed? And I would be concerned. I guess I would want the planning board to consider what gets done in these situations in the future.
Gotcha. Okay. You, you want that, Mr. Chairman, you want that in the form of a motion as just articulated?
Yes.
That got written here.
I move.
Yeah, okay.
You want it in, in the form of a motion?
Yeah, just like we did the last one.
I move that our comment consists of.
I can read what I wrote, Veronica, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, read that back, because mine are in forms of questions.
Yep. Did this farm stand open without all required permits and all applicable inspections? And if yes, what gets done about situations like that, and in the future?
So moved.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Veronica Kelly, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Right, it's about 6:30. Is Rob on?
I don't see Rob yet unless he is caller 01. I don't believe he is. He, he showed up by name last time.
We'll give him a minute.
Do you want to say, to truck on through to 5-1 while we're waiting?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, this one, this one is as simple as a brief update on fiscal year '21, the year that we are now just past the halfway mark. In consultation with Lori and the Treasurer's Office, we are trending slightly under on revenue, but more than making up the round based on the fact that we have continued to employ a spending freeze that is requiring prior authorization before expenditures over a certain amount of money are authorized. So tight reins is what actually saved us at the tail end of last year, and it's serving us well, at least to this point this year. So fiscal '21, we are, we're in line with where we need to be based on those two things.
Any update from the state?
I'm sorry?
Any update from the state as finalizing their budget?
They did.
They did, and it is for us what we predicated our votes on back at town meeting.
So just a little.
There's, there's Rob now. And the last piece of this, before we jump back to Rob, is fiscal '22. I've been hoping to be able to get a budget memo out. At the last meeting, you had asked that we hold it off. We're, we're getting a little behind the eight ball in terms of timing. So I, I intend to send one out, and I would send it based on the most conservative language that I can employ, absent something more specific from you. So I, I just need you to know that. I've been waiting to send it out at your request, but I do need to get it out.
Let's discuss this more after Rob. Is that okay, Wayne?
That's fine, yeah. Okay, all right, Rob, you on?
Hey, can you hear me?
Okay, we'll skip back to 2.2, School Committee Liaison, Robert Templeton, Draft School Budget Discussion. So Rob, thank you for joining us tonight.
No worries.
So as you just probably heard, we're starting to talk about next year's budget already, and the town, or the school's budget being the largest chunk of ours, we wanted to get a sense of, I mean, this discussion with you is going to predicate this discussion we just put off a second ago as to budget direction. So if you can just give an update where the school board's at?
So we.
So we sent out a, during our last meeting, I think it was December 22nd, we sent out a draft kind of initial budget, which had a 3.9% increase in the budget from last year. So that put us at a total of 60 million over that timeframe. I don't, I apologize, I don't have it broken down into the Townsend portion of it. But we're, we continue to work on the budget on a daily basis in terms of what's getting cut and reduced. I know there is a, we have a budget summit scheduled for tomorrow, January 6th for the, for the towns. I believe Jim is attending that. And that'll have details on, you know, how that plays out, at least from the budgetary work from an assessment standpoint for each of the three towns. Right now is it, go ahead, Jim.
Do you know from whom the email came after the meeting of the 22nd? Because I don't, I don't recall seeing it. I just checked Brad and I don't see it coming in from Brad and I don't see it from Nancy.
Okay. Yeah, I can look. I forwarded it onto you right now. At least from what I, you know, from what I got during the meeting. But that'll, that'll have all the details for, you know, for that document.
Excellent. Thank you.
So that's kind of where it's at now. Again, the budget, you know, kind of breaks, this document will break down the budget in terms of, you know, where that comes from. Obviously, the biggest portion of it is, you know, the employee contractual obligations, some curricular curriculum needs that, you know, that the school is looking to, to work through. And then there's, you know, a handful of other, other items that make up the, you know, the increase from, from last year. And then again, we're looking for, you know, we've just started to get feedback from the other towns as to where they're at and who's pushing back on what. So we'll, we'll wait and, you know, kind of see where that, that comes from, from there. But I can assure you that the school committee is quite, you know, quite understanding of the challenges, not just that this year is looking at, but knowing that it's probably, you know, our biggest challenges probably aren't this year, but the out years given, you know, given everything that's happening. So we look forward to, you know, working collaboratively with you all to, to try and work through this.
Okay, I guess just my initial thought is, or comment is to keep it as level as possible because as, I don't know if you heard before you jumped on, our revenues are down. And we expect them to be down and I don't know what state aid is going to look like next year. I know there were some things in this last budget that just passed for school relief. So I don't know how that affects next year either. Veronica, I don't know if you have anything?
I guess that last point of yours, Wayne, is where I would focus. I would think that if there are, I don't, I imagine that the school committee has looked at this already, but if there are curriculum needs that might be related to the remote learning that's going on now and things like that, I, I would imagine that there are funding sources available for things like that because it would be good to, to keep it down as, as close to zero or one as you could get.
I think that one of the things, and I know, I think it'll be important for y'all to, you know, we're, as it stands right now, we're expecting next year to go, I mean, we're planning fall going back as normal.
And I hope so too.
Our concern, I mean, the big concern, and I know it's, it probably is counter to everything that, that people will think, but going back normal is the cheapest way for us to go back. The remote and the hybrids and everything else is what is really challenging the district right now. And that's where all of the state funding has, has gone, you know, gone to. And any, any savings that we have seen in different areas from, you know, whether or not using the buses as much as, as, you know, as before. Our current draft budget has, you know, we are adding 1.5 million from E and D into that budget to, you know, to minimize, you know, what we're looking, you know, to minimize the impact on the towns for that. And that's, you know, that's, I believe that's more than last year, but again, that continues to be a, you know, kind of a, you know, that can't go on forever, right? I mean, you know, continuing to, to look for, for those items and, and putting that, that E and D funds back into the budget is, is something that we feel we needed to do. But it, it is a, you know, it's a short-term gap. So we are, we're working to, to keep it as low as, as we potentially can keep it. And we'll continue to work to, you know, to work with you all to, to see where we can, we can make that work.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just clarification, what is E and D?
That's our excess and deficiency funds, so that any, any kind of savings that, you know, that we may have over the course of the year, the funds go back into a, I guess that's a revolving account, Jim, and.
Their equivalent of free cash, Veronica.
Yeah.
Right.
And so.
Over, over in the in or less on the out, that results in a positive.
Yeah, so we're basically supplementing next year's budget with, you know, free cash from, you know, from our rainy day account that we have. And the challenge that we have there, right, is that, you know, the biggest risk that we have with using those funds is, you know, at any time during the year, somebody comes into the district that, you know, whether they be a special needs or special education student, we, you know, we have to provide them services. And if, you know, if that, you know, if that is somebody that needs $10 in services, that's one thing. If that's somebody who needs $1 million in special education, that's usually where those, you know, where those needs would be met through that E and D fund.
So are you guys looking at things like here, this is what it would be if we had no increase? This is what it would be if we had a 2% increase. Our, our pie in the sky is a 3.9% increase and we were really going wild. It would be a 5% because the towns probably aren't going to be able to accommodate that. And if they voted down, what do you do? So are you guys looking at different possibilities?
We're looking at what cuts would, I mean, we're always looking at what, what the impact would be for level funded and, you know, level services budgets. And how that, you know, how that'll impact, you know, class size and the services that we can provide.
Mr. Chairman?
But I mean, we've, Jim, just one, one quick point. I mean, we've, we've looked at, you know, it's, it's been a cut situation at the school, you know, from, from that standpoint for, for a number of years. So it's, again, it gets harder and harder to, you know, to make cuts and not have it impact programs. But again, the, you know, we're doing everything we can to, you know, to work that because again, I don't believe that this is the worst year that we have. I think it's, you know, it's probably next year and the year after that, you know, that, that caused, caused me concerns. But I will, I will say that, you know, that there's been a lot of work done on that. And I'll send you all this, this draft, you know, document here to give you, you know, give you the, the timeline for that. And then as you guys continue your discussions, again, your feedback will just help, you know, help us understand where the, you know, where the guardrails are.
Just a couple of things to frame it from, from the town budget perspective, Rob. We're allowed under Prop 2 and 1/2 to, to raise revenue on the local side by above a half a million dollars, a little north of a half a million dollars a year. If the 3.9% that you guys are currently contemplating rules the day, and if there's an easy application of that 3.9% to last year's assessment, which I know it's a little trickier than that, but just for, for simplicity's sake, that's about a $450,000 increase right there.
Yeah, my math is the same there.
Yes, that, that again is, is nearly everything we can raise new. Again, this would be the fourth year going directly to the education portion of the budget. I don't envy Superintendent Morgan or Nancy Haynes, you know, the business manager, any of you guys. I mean, it's a, it's a difficult budget to try to put together generally, even more so during COVID. But at some point, we can't continue to, to let things fall behind in all other departments. And on the issue of E and D, one of the things we talked about last year, and I think it's, it's fair to talk about again this year, is, is changing the paradigm just a little bit. Is there something to be said for perhaps the assessments are too high? If you're in fact generating that much E and D? And if the assessments were not as high, you wouldn't have that E and D. So it seems a little weird that we have this E and D that is dangerous to use toward the budget, but but it's there every year.
Yeah.
With tax, with taxation on this side of the budget is, you know, if you're generating a couple of million dollars in, in free cash, you're taxing too much.
Right, and I, and I would, I would just say probably the, you know, the way to evaluate that would be in what, you know, what the result, you know, where that's coming from. Because again, I'm not an expert on, you know, that, that aspect of the whole school budget. But it's different things on, on every year. I mean, this year's savings are a lot different than what they were from last year. And again, I give a lot of credit to Superintendent Nancy and the work that they do to, you know, to really beat that, you know, beat that budget up. You know, I think we've continued to increase that, you know, that number. And this, again, we're not, we don't have, we didn't save 1.5 million last year. We're dipping into more of what those funds are, you know, that's in that, you know, that's in that E and D account. We gotta keep something in there for, you know, the active, you know, for the potentials that, that could potentially come out there. But we've increased that budget and that, you know, the, the balance of that E and D fund has, you know, has gone down. So, but I can get more details on that for y'all on, you know, kind of what the specifics are with it because I don't have all that right at the tip here.
With that information, Jim, thanks. I'm gonna have to tomorrow ask you guys to sharpen your pencils because that's got to be reduced in half. We can't keep, as Jim pointed out, we can't keep kicking the can down the road, if you will, on town infrastructure and requirements. So I asked Jim to bring that to the table tomorrow.
And Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we're guilty of on this side, which to the credit of the, the budget creators and presenters on the school side, is we look at all of the required expenditures and if there's money left, we then look at salaries. But when you heard Rob make his presentation, there's no hesitation on the school side to say the costs, including contract costs or salary increases or employee cost increases, you know, are this. So they're, they're starting from a different place than we are even kind of philosophically because they're including contract raises in the absolute half to happen, whereas we, we generally traditionally don't do that.
I think we should change that.
I was just going to say the same thing because if we're going to skip back to our guidance for budget next year is, I would like to have those in there as a possibility. You know, what does the budget look like with the raises we've been, you know, bantering about with the unions? So we can, we can plan for that because it's, again, it's the pushback that we're going to have to put on the, the school for, you know, if we can do that or not, or if we're going to have to make cuts elsewhere, so.
And I think.
Catch you later tonight.
Yeah. And the last thing I'll say is, again, there's, there's, we have to, I, I hear what you're saying, right? About you can't have your, all your, all your funds kind of go to education and nothing else happen. You know, I would like to, you know, we have to come to, we have to come to a place where we're able to, to do both and maintain, right? Because again, we continue to cut and, you know, the, the cuts, you know, the cuts come at the expense of programs and, and things like that. So it's, I, I hear your, I hear your piece. And again, we're, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at, at, you know, what look to be additions, but in our minds, they're items that we've had to cut out of the budget, you know, over the past four or five years because we're trying to work with one of the member towns to, to make it, you know, to make it go. You know, the other, as you guys know, the other, the other thing that, that, and it's, I don't think it's going to be an issue this year, right? But we just also have to work through the, you know, making sure that what you all need matches what, you know, what everybody else needs, right? Because when the way the assessments work, in order for me to get, you know, in order for the schools to get the assessment low enough for you guys to be happy, could put the assessments for other towns at, you know, an even lower place. And it, it has a ripple effect on what the school budget is. So that's, we all got to work together. And that's why these, you know, these budget summits are so important because it's not as, I can't just reduce your assessment. I have to reduce everybody's assessment proportionally based on the regional agreement. And that could have, you know, significant impacts on the, you know, on the school budget, more so than what they already are.
Do you know, Rob, by chance, what our numbers have done in terms of enrollment as, as a member community compared to others? And because that's one of the other drivers in the formula.
I mean, I'd be, I, I don't know the exact number, but I know, I mean, our numbers, you know, continue to, you know, to decrease. And I think similar to what's happening in the state. But I can't tell you exactly what's happening in Lunenburg or Rotten Dunstable or anything like that.
I was speaking more about Townsend versus Pepperell and Ashby. Are our student numbers up as a town, down, or otherwise, if you know?
It's, it's fairly proportional, right? I mean, it kind of bounces around, you know, a percentage wise here or there. I think, I think the, the numbers haven't, it hasn't been significant over the past, past couple of years. Meaning, you know, the Townsend percentage is typically, you know, in that 33% range. And Pepperell's 50% and Ashby makes up the rest. So I think that's where, you know, it's, it's, it fluctuates within a percentage point either way.
Well, I for one, want to thank you because I know it's not a job that is easy trying to do a budget for a regional school district, so.
So I guess, Jim, the only thing left would be to, if we could invite Rob back for our next meeting, if he's available, to get an update from.
After tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
See where we're at.
So tomorrow is the Finance Subcommittee and I had written Monday, February 1st, a BOs joint meeting to review the NMRSD budget. Is that still in the works? Is that still the timetable?
I expect to have that confirmed tomorrow at the meeting, but that's what's penciled in.
February 1st is the public, is the, I think it is a joint meeting and it's the public, you know, the public, whatever they, you know, whatever you call it there to, you know, to basically work the. Yeah, it's the, it's the, the public hearing on the budget. And that's joint with the, you know, with the finance committees and the Board of Selectmen from all three towns.
Thank you.
So and that's, that's, you know, that's the date there. And then, like I said, I'll send, Jim, I'll send you these documents here and see what happens tonight.
Wayne and Veronica as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
No problem. Appreciate it.
Good night.
We do have Town Council that's signed in now. And we are at about 10 minutes, 10 minutes early of our 7 o'clock, but there's nothing that would preclude you from jumping into that now if it's your pleasure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that if you are, Veronica.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so skipping back to the executive session at 7, can I get a motion, please, Veronica?
Yeah. I move that. Um, I move that, um, we enter executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints and return to open meeting after the executive session.
And I'll second that.
Um, do we have, uh, an estimate of time so that I assume everybody has to leave the meeting and then come back in?
Right, we, we will, we will disinvite everyone who's currently in and lock the meeting. Um, I know Adam is going to hard stop at an hour. Um, it's really up to you, uh, as board members, how long you want the, uh, the conversation to go until you feel you've been satisfied with.
I would hope it, I would hope it take no longer than a half an hour.
Okay, so we should tell people to check back in in?
30 minutes.
7:15 or so?
I think you just did.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh, Veronica Kell, yes?
Wayne Miller, yes. Take a quick break.
Yes.
We'll be back.